I'd like to say good afternoon to everyone and welcome to our CPS Board of Trustees meeting to be held on December 13, 2021 at 3:30 p.m. And the time is 3:35. We'd like to call this meeting to order, and at this time, I would like for Ms. Shannon Ramirez to confirm the quorum.
Yes, sir. We have Vice Chair Gonzalez, we have the mayor, we have Trustee Kelly, and we have yourself, sir. A quorum is present.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Okay, we have a quorum set. Now, we move on to number two, our safety message and invocation and pledge of allegiance. Ms. Loretta Kerner.
Thank you, Chair Dr. Mackey. We first wanted to review the evacuation procedures so we were, we are prepared to be safe in the event of an emergency. If you hear the fire alarm, follow the instructions in the announcement delivered through the P A system. If asked to evacuate, use the glass doors exiting the boardroom to the outside. If that door is blocked, use the door at the rear of the room. Verbally alert others in the room of the fire and evacuate. Then move to the main parking lot in front of headquarters or the A T and T parking lot over the McCullough Brooklyn Bridges, whichever route is safer, and await further instructions. In the event of a situation like this, our security team will be monitoring the situation and will notify the appropriate emergency services and team members. We also have employees nearby who are trained to administer first aid if needed. Safety is a top priority at CPS Energy, and while we hope this information is never needed, we want to make sure that we are always ready. Now, will you please stand with me for an invocation? We thank you for the many blessings you have freely given to each of us. We ask for your presence to guide this meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. Provide them with the knowledge, compassion, and wise counsel needed as they discuss the business matters on the agenda today. Help us all to remember that we are stewards acting on behalf of our customers and provide us with the grace to serve all people well. We ask this in your name. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Well, I'd like to thank you. We have Mr. Steen. Is he present?
Okay, you're stuck with me for a little bit longer. Now, we've got the public input session, uh, public input portion of the agenda. And this provides an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on any of this meeting's posted agenda items. We will invite pre-registered speakers to speak, and they may only address the board on CPS Energy-related business listed on the posted agenda for this meeting. Speakers should state their first and last name, what organization or group they represent, if applicable, and indicate the agenda item number they are going to speak about. For this meeting, we have four registered speakers who will speak in person, I'm sorry, we have three who will speak in person, and one will speak virtually. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. Thomas, can you go ahead and cue the timer? And our first in-person speaker is Mr. Alan Montemayor.
My name is Alan Montemayor. I represent the Alamo Group of the Sierra Club. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you once again. I don't take it for granted. On rates, we want to acknowledge the difficult financial position of CPS resulting from snowpocalypse and the great resignation and climate change. I would like to further acknowledge the intertwined finances of CPS and the City of San Antonio, essentially a structural conflict of interest on the part of the city council. Realistically, however, what is financially bad for CPS hurts us all in many ways, and it's not my intent to hurt CPS in any way by our actions or comments. Please consider all changes to this rate structure through the lens of social justice. It's the poor that bear the brunt of any rate hikes, particularly base rate hikes, and rate hikes that benefit large residential and commercial users and hurt the poor and efficient energy users. We're asking the city council not to implement any rate changes before securing a firm and equitable plan from CPS Energy to eliminate coal by 2030. For those of you with a business-as-usual mindset, I have a quote, "If you really think the environment is less important than the economy, try holding your breath while you count your money." Regarding the big freeze, I believe you have my written comments in front of you. I'm not going to delve into that any further. I hope that you will read them and take them to heart. Please be aggressive in implementing increased cooperation, communications, and implementation of changes within CPS, S A's, city, and county governments. Regarding customer cutoffs, I hope that external funds will minimize the impact to the unfortunate rate payers who are behind in payments. Please view the large number of rate payers, delinquent rate payers, as a primary indicator of the large energy burden that plagues many in our city. Utility cutoffs have a cascading effect throughout the community, a negative effect, so please consider all changes to utility cutoff policy through the lens of social justice. In summary, you'll be selecting a new C E O this year, and we very much hope that one of his missions will be, his or her missions, will be transparency, 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 and that they will be able to regain the trust of the community. 2022 will be a pivotal year in acting to eliminate coal from the generating mix in San Antonio. The Sierra Club has had a policy of polite, persistent persuasion throughout the years that has been less than effective in dealing with CPS Energy, quite frankly. Therefore, climate change is our number-one issue of the Sierra Club and many other environmental groups in the coming year. In 2022, we will ask more, speak louder, speak with more unified voices, and expect results from you guys. I would be happy to speak with any of each of you personally to discuss this further at length. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is, was registered as Olga and Laurie Wilson. I'll call for Olga or Laurie Wilson one last time. All right, our next registered speaker is Lillian White. And I'll call for Lillian White one more time. Okay, and we had one virtual speaker register today, Veronica Yuribe. Adrian, do you have Veronica on the line?
Yes, we did have one registered speaker, but that person did not join today's meeting to provide public comment.
All right. Thank you, Adrian. And I'll turn the meeting back over to you, Chair Dr. Mackey.
Thank you, Ms. Kerner. Thank you. At this time, we would like to move to item number four, interim C E O report. Mr. Rudy Garza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have a brief president's report today that really puts some structure around the focus areas of mine over the next 30, 60, 90 days. As you can imagine, with the conversation going on with our city owner and regulator regarding our rate request, that has taken up a significant amount of, of my focus and that of my leadership team over the, you know, last 30 days. So when you look at the really focus areas, the, the three focus areas and my goals right now to, to try to get CPS Energy back on the, you know, really keep them, on, keep us on our tracks and, and moving in a positive direction are the focus areas that we've been talking about, that, you know, some of our, one of our, our speakers talked about a second ago. First is rebuilding customer trust. That happens one positive interaction, one positive conversation at a time, and I've been having many with, with our customers, quite frankly, out in the community. We've, we've had events all over the community, and we've continue, we will continue to have events all over the community going forward, but I try to hit as many of those, hit a couple on Saturday. And when you get out there and really start talking to customers, it, it makes all the difference in the world when, when it comes to, to rebuilding trust, strengthening the customer stakeholder relations. Again, making sure that we're having the right conversations where customers are is the second focus area of mine. And finally, improving employee morale, you know, while the impact on our community as a result of COVID and as a result of, you know, the winter storm, obviously are significant, our, our employees have, have felt that too, and I want to make sure that, you know, we're having good conversations out in the field, you know, I stop, I try to stop and talk to every employee who will give me some time walking around the building, coming in, in the mornings, the afternoons, and, and it's been a really positive transition so far into, to my term, my time here as interim C E O. Next slide, please. So here, just a few examples of what, what I'm talking about when we talk about rebuilding customer trust. You have to know what I'm focused on, and, and I have to really listen, and, and so that's what I'm doing. I'm out there listening to feedback and talking to them about how we intend to, to move forward, sharing winter preparedness plans, that, that giving people a sense of what we've done really has moved us in the right direction to be prepared for, for this winter season. And so these are just a few of the examples of things that, that I'm talking to our community about trying to rebuild trust. Next slide. You look at, you know, strengthening customer stakeholder relations, we've got a lot of really good feedback about, you know, how our local government entities would like us to be more transparent, be more communicative, and so I've spent a lot of time talking to council members, talking to city staff, talking, we were at Bear County, me and my entire leadership team provided a winter preparedness update and an update on the rate increase at Bear County last week, and the, the response really was more than I could have, have hoped for, and just in terms of the dialogue and really positive dialogue that we've had. And again, continuing to meet with not just business partners, but partners that, that we help, you know, you, we, that we lean on to help our community, you know, we're out there day in and day out. We had a great event with Lulac on Saturday morning on the small business front, trying to get folks signed up to, and educated on how to do business with us. I'd like to do more of those events as we go forward, but it really allows us to, to gather, you know, positive feedback and, and really do something with it. And finally, kind of the last focus area that, that, that I'm really honed in on is improving employee morale. Our team has, has, you know, had a lot going on the last two years. We've served the public regardless of the, the challenges, and, you know, and we're really way below what I think is a, you know, reasonable place to be in terms of the total headcount. You know, we're down, you know, right around 2,900, that's 400 employees below where, where I think we should be, at least our approved headcount, and that puts more pressure on every other employee that's here bringing it to work every day, trying to serve this community, especially those that are responding to the construction and the growth going around, going on around the city. We're growing in every direction, and so how we talk to employees about what's going on, making sure that they have the same information we're providing to our community right now has, has been really, really important. Next slide. So when you, when you kind of look at the activity levels, I wanted to kind of break it down into a 30, 60, 90-day-plus outlook, and, you know, I'll just provide a very high-level overview. I am really focused on the blocking and tackling, being available to the community, being available to our employees, taking feedback, you know, we're getting a lot of really good feedback in our conversations with, with city council members about things they'd like us to focus on. And so, you know, once we get past, you know, the January timeframe, you know, focusing in on the feedback that we heard from our customers and our owner regulator is going to be a focus area of mine. I'm all about action. My team, my leadership team and I are really trying to focus on things that we can move forward that will move us in the direction our community expects of us, and over the next, you know, 30, 60, 90 days, you're going to see me focus, continue to focus on these really three key, key areas. So I'll stop there before I get to the employee recognition component of my report and just see if anybody has any questions.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Steen?
So, Mr. Garza, I've gotten a lot of positive feedback on the job you're doing so far, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
So in less than a year, there's been a substantial exodus of top management from CPS Energy. And we all know who they are, and, so I'm not going to detail the departures or the years of experience that we've lost. And you're talking about your three goals. This relates to that. I'm going to ask you to reflect on why this has occurred, and if, if you think it's likely to continue, and if so, what are you doing as our interim C E O to staunch the flow? And to add that it's, it's not just a concern that I have, it's showing up with the credit rating agencies. S and P calls it an elevated governance risk, and Fitch calls it a near-term credit risk. So I'd like for you to, to comment on that.
Trustee Steen, I will tell you that the employees that we've lost, we've lost for all kinds of reasons, a lot of retirements, because, you know, a lot of employees, they have 35 years or, or more, and they've just got to the point where they're ready to go and do other things, and, and we wish those folks well. I think others, CPS Energy, I know it's been a tough year really, last nine months for us here at home, but I will tell you, our people are well sought after, and the work that, that, the, the conversations we've been having about how we compensate our employees, that will factor into our ability to stay competitive. Every other utility comes to CPS Energy looking for, you know, experience and expertise, and we've got a great brand in our industry, and so we've lost some folks, quite frankly, to other opportunities in the energy sector, and I expect that, you know, will probably continue to be a risk while we try to get our operations here stabilized. Now, with that being said, we have a great succession planning process here at CPS Energy. Trustee Steen, I've worked, you know, multiple, you know, places, both in the private and public sector. CPS Energy does succession planning as well as any organization I've been a part of, and so there are going to be employees and leaders that are asked to step up, maybe beyond, you know, really what they're ready for in some instances, but they're talented, and we've got a deep bench. We'll have to rebuild that bench, quite frankly, as a result of the work that we're doing, having to plug holes in our, you know, in our organization, but I've got confidence in every one of our leaders that we've asked to step up and step in to new challenges. And so, so I've got confidence that we're going to be able to do the job our community expects of us, but we have got work to do to ensure our compensation strategy remains competitive. And, and for all the, the employees who have decided to move on, there are equally number of employees that I've had direct conversations with that had opportunities to move on that have stayed. And all I can do, sir, is work with the team that I have on the field, and, and that's what I'm doing, but I've got confidence in my leadership team. I need all the support I can from the board to, to get where we need to be, but, but it is not going to be for lack of communication and effort and conversations individually, trying to get our leadership team, you know, feeling good about their roles and good about, you know, the, the difference they can make for our customers, and, and we'll get there, you know, and we have had conversations with the rating agencies about the departures, you know, they've been good conversations, you know, they're, they're glad that we have a plan. Our CFO, every time, you know, we, we've got a new announcement about an executive leaving, we're, we're calling the rating agencies to talk to them about it. And so the fact that we're, we're being honest about, you know, our opportunities to, to backfill and to continue to work our succession plan, it's, it's made a positive impact in those conversations.
Well, thank you for that answer, and, you know, you, you mentioned those goals. I'd like for it to be a goal of yours. I know it is, maybe you just didn't mention it today, but just to really focus on that because it's something that's very concerning.
Yes, sir.
Rudy, is it fair to say that even though you're originally part of the group that didn't exit, as part of, part of the sustainment was that, that, the, the plan that Dr., Mr. Steen just spoke about, we had a succession plan, and so you were part of that succession plan, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Also, our previous C E O designed the team, most of the team that had exodus, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And I believe you're currently intimately working with the personnel committee and as well as we're working with Lisa Lewis, who's in charge of H R, to again address retention, to address a new plan for operations for personnel, because like Mr. Steen, like a lot of us, we are concerned, but it is something that we're actively doing, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Mayor, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Rudy, for the presentation. I, I just, when you're listening to goals, rebuild customer, customer trust, strengthen customer and stakeholder relations, improve employee morale, might, one might say, well, where is good, reliable service in that goal? But, you know, as I reflect on that, that is very much a part of rebuilding customer trust, and so I do want just to make a comment, because it's sort of related to the conversation that's happening right now. There are thousands of employees in this organization that deserve, deserve a whole lot of credit. Obviously, there's, it's not been a great time in the utility industry anywhere, but particularly here in Texas, but we have service-minded employees who, who take it upon themselves that their mission is to serve the public, and they want to see competence and they want to see humility. And I think you're reflecting that in your, in your tenure thus far. I would urge you to continue that, but I do think we have to continue to remind ourselves there are folks that are out there in the field right now fixing something, and they're doing that because they live here, they want to serve their neighbors, and that's ultimately what drives them to work at a place like this, and we do thank them for that.
Thank you, Mayor. And in my conversations with city council, you know, it's kind of a chicken and the egg conversation. A lot of feedback has been, it's, you know, about the rate requests that, you know, we really need to rebuild public trust to get beyond, you know, that to, you know, to consider a rate request, but, but it's hard to rebuild, you know, customer trust if my service levels are declining, you know, and the mayor's heard me say that, you know, from the diocese at the, at B Session, but absolutely, the, probably the most critical component to rebuilding customer trust beyond doing what I say, you know, we're going to do as an organization, is ensuring that they have the service they need from us, Mayor. So I appreciate you pointing that out.
Okay. Trustee Kelly?
Rudy, thank you for putting together some very good information here. The thing that struck me, though, is that if I were coming in as the new C E O, unless I thought this company had already achieved outstanding operational excellence, I would definitely be looking in the first 90 days to examine the operational environment that the company is operating in, and we've got a lot of challenges operationally, financially, and other things. I think it's fine to build customer trust and those other things, but those things will build much quicker in an environment of operational excellence. And so I was kind of surprised to see that there's no mention of the operations of this company. I've been involved with an awful lot of companies over my 50-plus years in the business, and I don't think I've ever seen a company that surveys its customers more than this company. I think we need to reach a point where we, instead of surveying them all the time, we find out exactly what they want, we put it into three or four broad objectives, and then we go after those objectives. And if we satisfy those objectives, then that means we're satisfying our customers. If we don't, then we should be penalized for not doing that. But I believe we've heard enough, at least in my opinion, I've, I've heard from customers now for 11 years, and I'd like to see us synthesize that and the four or five major objectives of this company, and then spend all of our time on those objectives. So again, I guess in short, I'd like to see us, in addition to focusing on these three areas, I'd like for us to focus very heavily on the financial challenges and the operational challenges that are facing us near term and into the future.
Mr. Kelly, what I would say, just relative to that, is, you know, our request of our city owner regulator on rates, you know, is a focus on the financial challenges that, that certainly, you know, we recognize, you know, and where customers have been interested in, quite frankly, on the operational side, is what are you doing this year, you know, over the last nine months to make, you know, the next winter experience, you know, more in focus? So on the operational side, our focus this year has very much been to get our plants ready for the winter run season, to do the evaluations that we've needed to do to make sure that our plants are running, and on the wire side, to, to, to really take a look at our load shed system and allow for that system to be, be robust enough to handle a load shed event that we saw in February. So our operational focus, while continuing to, you know, to do the blocking and tackling that we do every day, really, the, the focus this year has been on taking a lot of input we've gotten from a lot of people in the community and try to ensure that they know we've done the, the work that we need to do to be ready for, for this year. So absolutely, I, I agree, financial and operational is, is interwoven in every one of these three key areas, and certainly you'll see two presentations today, one on the financial side, one on the operational side, that continue to focus on these areas that are critical for our success this year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Garza. I appreciate that. Your comments on building customer relationship and employee relationship and employee morale, and like Mr. Kelly said, the other two pieces is financial and operation. Those are keys that you and I talked about last week is one of them. Those two areas that we talked about that we need to hit, especially the operation, because that's what we're in, in this business for, is, is electric and energy, is making sure we continue to produce that, and, and we're doing a good job. I think you have a good start on this and, and good direction on where we would like to go. And again, you're, you're being out there at the B Sessions, city council meetings, and all the other meetings that you're attending and letting people know that you're, what you're trying to do in this community. I applaud you for that, and thank you for a great job on that right there.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey.
This time, Ms.
So I do have one more component. Every, every report, I'm going to try to bring an employee from the area, you know, they're all, all of our employees are critical. Going into the winter season, I thought highlighting one of our power generation employees would be great today, and Paolo will be here to introduce himself. I'm going to just run through a quick background on Paolo. He and I have actually had a mentoring session even before I was in this role. He's a great young engineer of ours, plant engineer working at the Bronnic Power Station, supports both operations and maintenance activities. We, we're recognizing Paolo for his efforts in leading our A V R combustion turbine one C T one restoration project. The A V R C T one experienced an unplanned outage due to a equipment failure that had the potential of derating A V R throughout the winter season. The unit derate would have reduced our overall generation capacity throughout the critical winter season and impacted commercial availability. Utilizing his experience and project management expertise, Paolo was able to effectively lead the repair effort and return the unit to operation four weeks ahead of schedule. Paolo completed this effort while supporting the operation and maintenance teams daily, planning for the A V R spring 22 overhaul, and managing numerous other plant projects. Paolo's positive attitude, ability to manage multiple work activities, and attention to detail contribute to his success as a valuable member of our team. Paolo joined CPS Energy in June 2015 after graduating from the University of Texas at San Antonio with a bachelor's science degree in mechanical engineering, and he is a licensed professional engineer. It's because of employees like Paolo that I am confident in our succession plan going into the future. So with that, Paolo, why don't you come up and introduce yourself and see if our trustees have any questions for you?
Good afternoon, you know, Board Chair, Dr. Mackey, and trustees. And Rudy, thank you for the, you know, great introduction, and just want to express my gratitude for the recognition, but I, I hope that you all know that I'm one of many power generation and CPS Energy team members who are equally deserving of being up here as well, which is one of the things that I really enjoy about CPS Energy and our team. We always come together, especially during moments of adversity like the A V R C T one outage, the day-to-day maintenance and operations issues that we see, and also instances such as our, you know, winter storm that we all endured in February, and lessons learned after that in improving our power generation infrastructure. The team always comes together in a collaborative and efficient and safe mindset, and I really owe a lot of my success and, and a lot of things that I've learned from other experienced individuals that we have internally. So that's, you know, if I can convey one thing, that we do have a great team who all realizes the critical and essential nature of the service that we provide for our rate payers and, and the citizens of, of San Antonio. So I'll keep it, you know, brief and to the point, and again, thank you for the recognition as, as well.
I'll help.
I have a question. You said you have learned something from the last winter storm. What have you learned, and what are we doing now to alleviate that from happening again?
I think we've learned that there are always room, there's always room for improvement. Leading into every winter season, the plant and power generation as a whole goes through, and we assess our winter readiness, our heat trace, our insulation, our unit operations plans. And this February event was a big eye-opener that there are definitely rooms for improvement. We assessed the event when it happened, after it happened, came up with a good list of lessons learned, and came together with internal resources, external experts, and developed a better plan for how we can improve our generation assets. And that's one thing that carries through with our team, regardless of if it was the winter storm event or the day-to-day issues that we do find with our fleet. We're always looking at continually growing and learning from these events.
Other board members? Mr. Stein?
So did you graduate from UTSA in 2015?
I did, in May of 2015, and I joined the company just a couple of weeks after, in June of 2015.
And how did you have CPS Energy on your radar screen, and what drew you to CPS Energy?
Sure. So I was actually an intern with CPS Energy during the summer of 2014, and I had a really favorable experience. I interned at the Spruce Power Plant, and the favorable experience I had during that time convinced me that CPS Energy was a good place to start off right after I graduated.
And Mr. Garza, I know you're an engineer. Were you a mechanical engineer?
Sir, I got a bachelor's science in double E from UT Austin, electrical engineering.
Electrical engineering. And so a question would be, just from your point of view, what's the biggest challenge that CPS Energy has now?
I think the biggest challenge that we have is, and I think it was spoken to earlier, about losing valuable knowledge with people who are approaching the age of retirement. There's a lot of good knowledge that we have that I've personally seen in our power generation team, and I'm sure that carries through with our company. And so passing along that knowledge and bringing in new, but also some experienced professionals as well to bolster our knowledge base is what we need to focus on and look forward into the future.
Thank you, and congratulations on the good job you did.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, please.
I just wanted to thank you for telling your story and for your service to CPS and to our community, Paolo. Very impressive, and you're the kind of person that we should be developing through the company, and you might be running this company one day, so thanks for being here.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you all. Have a great afternoon.
Mayor, I think we were all thinking about that, that that's like our young Rudy Garza.
And from one alumni to another, go UTS, so yeah.
Okay, we move on under updated chair priorities. Number five is a resolution for a policy review, and the reason I asked for the resolution for three reasons. Number one, in this meals and travel for top executives, we sign off, a chair signs off on the CEO and president's report, but the other executives, I know, and it's hit the news, but I would like for Ms. Ramirez to review that. I'd like for her to read it, but there's three reasons why. Because a number of policies that I've looked at over the years and been an administrator, there was things in that policy that says practice, procedures, and guidelines, and people have a tendency not to want to follow those. They say, well, it's not part of the policy, it's practice, it's just a procedure, but we don't have to follow it. So what I'm asking is, Ms. Ramirez, in this resolution, is to review it and bring it back to the board and come up with some suggestions how we can tighten this up and make it better for the company. That's one policy that I think that we can start on. There's other ones that I'm looking at that I would like to see, but it could have been that we could have just asked Ms. Ramirez to do this, but I think a formal procedure would be better, that knowing that she's going to look it up and we put it on the board agenda, to vote on this resolution, to put it on the board agenda, and making sure that it's tightened up, that these things are not happening, and to bring it to the CEO attention too, so that when they review it, when it comes across their desk, that just like we, the chairman does, and review it, question it, and if it's something that's out of norm, let the board know so we don't have this as a surprise. So I'd just like for this to be a formal process, just for this right here, so we're going to let everybody know that we have our eyes on this, and we're ready to move forward and not look back on this procedure right here. Ms. Ramirez, if you could read this resolution.
Yes, sir. This is the resolution for policy review. Whereas the CPS Energy Board of Trustees has become aware of recent media reports regarding the use of company purchase cards by former top CPS executives in a manner that may be damaging to the public trust in CPS Energy. Whereas the CPS Energy Board of Trustees believes that maintaining public trust is vital for any entity entrusted with ratepayer funding. Whereas the CPS Energy Board of Trustees seeks to better understand and improve upon CPS Energy's existing ethics, expense, and meals policies and procedures and the enforcement thereof. Be it resolved by the CPS Energy Board of Trustees that the General Counsel Office of CPS Energy shall conduct a review of all applicable ethics, expense, and meal policies and procedures, and provide a report to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees of the results of the review and recommend actions for strengthening CPS Energy's ethics, expense, and meal policies and procedures and the enforcement thereof.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. I did review that with Ms. Ramirez and interim CEO, Mr. Garza, and let them know that what I would like to see in this right here, and well, not just me, but this entire board, make sure we strengthen this up. Do we have any questions or comments on this from the board members? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion by Ms. Trustee Gonzalez, and a second by the mayor. We have any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. Thank you, Ms. Ramirez, and we'll be looking forward to hearing this report in the next, how many days can you get it done to us?
I'll have a report back to you at the next board meeting.
Okay, thank you. You're so great and gracious about that. Thank you. Okay, the next one we'll have on there is regular agenda, rate increase, Corey Kaczynski, and we'll cover that, is item number six. And I would like to thank too, before Corey began, I mean, Corey has been, from what I hear and visit with Mr. Wash over there at the city council, and Ben Gazelle over there, and they just say, your office should be over there at this time, you're over there so much, and that you're working hard with them, and thank you for what you're doing for us at CPS. You may proceed.
I appreciate that, Chair Dr. Mackey. Thank you very much, and good afternoon, Board. So today on the agenda, I don't have a formal presentation for you, but I did want to take a few moments to give a verbal debrief on the discussions we've been having with the city staff and with the city council over the last couple of weeks. So that'll be my purpose today. And then afterwards, myself, Rudy, and the team would be available for any questions. From a process perspective, the last two weeks have seen us launch our effort over at city council. Specifically, we've completed two B sessions with council. On December 1st, Rudy and I went over there on behalf of CPS to make our case for approval for two items. There's a base rate request of 3.85% and the establishment of a regulatory asset that's going to allow for the measured recovery of the winter storm fuel costs that we have paid, but have not recovered yet. And I'll point out now, and I'll point out a couple of times later, that the disputed cost of about $587 million that make up that $1 billion have not been paid, and they're not part of this request in terms of recovery. Then on December 8th, last week, the CFO and public utility supervisor, Ben Gorzal, made his presentation to council, where he presented and supported our recommendation to the council. In his presentation, there were also several reasonable recommendations for CPS on a go-forward basis that we will partner with the city on over the coming weeks and months. Both CPS Energy and the city have had to address questions about how this approach is different than the approach that was previously contemplated earlier in the summer. In short, our revised approach does not try to solve all of the issues that are facing CPS Energy right now. Rather, what we did in this approach was focus on the immediate financial pressures, the known information, and that's resulted in what we have in terms of our request that still enables financial stabilization, it still enables stabilizing our staffing levels, and supports us on the immediate infrastructure investments that are required. Benefit of this approach that we've taken is that allows time for you, the board, and for the rate advisory committee, and for the broader community, to continue to have the conversations around the complex policy issues, around generation planning, rate design, and equity, and those are big topics that have come up that we need to spend more time on. So over the next two years, with this request, we forecast that our metrics remain stable. We anticipate that our credit ratings would remain stable, and obviously, that enables continued affordable borrowing for CPS and ultimately our customers. I mentioned that this approach is focused on the near term, so we've also made it clear that on a go-forward basis, we anticipate taking a more incremental and more frequent approach towards rate requests. Currently, that cadence is every couple of years. We think that makes sense for us to proceed that way, and we'll continue in that fashion with these discussions. Just a couple of key notes about the content of our request that's been out in the community, but I'll share it here as well. The 3.85% base rate increase that we're discussing generates approximately $73 million over an annual period. That bill impact is approximately $3.84 to an average residential customer bill. This proposal also includes an offset to the base rate for those customers that qualify for the affordability discount plan. I wanted to mention that. The second recommendation in this is to increase the affordability discount program from, or up by another 14,000 customers for a total of 65,000 customers. So what that plays out to is about a $16.14 monthly benefit for those customers who qualify, which is nearly $200 a year, and we hope that helps offset some of this request as we continue to talk with the community about equity and rate design and so forth. Additionally, this revised request, before we came forward with this version, we didn't have any certainty in the summer in terms of what potential help would be available for our customers who've been impacted by the pandemic. Prior to Thanksgiving, though, city council voted on approving $20 million of federal ARPA funding that can be applied to customers most in need, and those are customers that would otherwise qualify for the affordability discount program. So we're also tackling the question of, hey, what about those customers that have had growing balances? Well, we're able to target them now with this ARPA funding and wipe out balances. So we think in the short term, this is a really good approach that helps address existing balances and helps offset some of the future impact for those customers while we continue the dialogue with our community and the board on rate design and equity. The last thing I'll touch on again, we mentioned the regulatory asset recommendation. That effectively will be set up for up to $1 billion, but very clearly will state that we are only going to begin recovery on the paid embedded amounts, and that amount is about $418 million. We recommend spreading that out over 25 years. That's about $1.26 per month bill impact for an average residential customer. And the implementation of both that and the rate request, we recommend to be March 1 of next year. So in total, for those customers not on the affordability discount program, you're looking at about a $5.10 impact for an average residential electric and gas customer. Last thing, this is a reminder, Rudy Garza, our interim CEO, of course, continues to provide updates along the way. I know we've had number one-on-one phone calls, a couple of board communications have gone out the last several weeks, and we continue to remain available between now and our vote later in January. And so the last thing I'll mention is looking ahead. We will have a public input session tonight, as you know, and then tomorrow on Tuesday, we're also going to have a tele-town hall online for the broader community to communicate with us and several leaders. We'll also be at city council tomorrow as well for B session. It's an opportunity for the council to ask us any additional questions they may have from the first two presentations they received. And we also have a number of council or district, we'll have meetings in the various council districts, we'll be talking to customers out there and answering any questions that folks in those communities have. Our plan with the board here is to come back on January 10th, and at that point, we'll present formally our presentation and our recommendation for approval. We'll also have members of the rate advisory committee and the citizens advisory committee as well come and speak and share their perspective on the rate request. And then following that, a few days later, on January 13th, we'll plan to take to city council a similar presentation for their ultimate recommendation of this rate request that we're bringing forward. So I just wanted to share briefly, verbally, where we're at in the process, and like I said, I'll have any questions, Chair, if there are any.
Before we ask some questions about this, I'd like to share this. In the beginning, when we first started talking about the rate case here a few months ago since I've been chair, I was very confused with numbers and different things. And I listened to every city council member talk with the CEO on the rate case, and the more we talked, the more I was confused. I've passed six bonds, and I should not be sitting here as a trustee and be as confused as I was about this. So during this process, I did ask the mayor, could I speak with the controller and the city manager? And we went over there, and we talked about, I was just confused again. So he got together, he said, Dr. Mackey, y'all come back next week, we'll put something together, and they did. Corey went over there, and I did, and visited with them, and with the CEO, and they explained some stuff, and then Corey said he'd been over there like a week prior, every day. And then the last time that I visited with the group of guys, Gazelle and Wash and Corey, it became plain and simple because they made it that way, that I could understand it and I can explain it a little bit more in the community about what are we exactly, what are we asking for? And the things that we're asking for, the basics to make sure we get through this year is kind of a holding place for us for the next 24 months until we can figure out which direction we're going to go with all other things that we're doing. It's become very clear, and Corey's done a tremendous job with his examples, and Ben did an extraordinary job, and after visiting with two B sessions, sitting in on two B sessions and listening to it, that right there, and them visiting with the city council, Rudy did an excellent job with the city council, and Ben came behind him a week later and did a great job too. So I think these guys just need, I don't know what to say, man. For me to understand this, which I have never understood this before, to make it so plain and simple for me, I think once we get out there and you all do the same job with our community, I think that they're going to understand what we're trying to do in bringing that rate down from 10% to 3.85, and what we're doing, because it's not the end. This is just the beginning, because we know we have to go back in two more years and ask for more, because things will become plainer with the winter problems that we've had, and we'll know more about the technology, and we'll know more about the operational piece before we go back in two years. But this is just a holding place for us right now, what we're asking, what they're asking for. So I just want to thank you all, Mr. Garza, Ms. Kaczynski, and Mayor, I want to thank you for the city council for that $20 million, or 25?
Twenty million.
$20 million to help our ratepayers on that right there. So that is, let the city council know, just trustees here appreciate that right there. And we're looking forward to going forward, but I'd like to open it up, before I ask my questions, I'd like to open it up to the rest of the board of trustees to ask some questions so you could understand how we got to this point, and that was because I was confused, and I kept asking questions and questions, trying to figure out what was going on. That was all. And that's why I knew a little bit more about it than you all. So excuse me if I was proceeding forward. Mr. Stein?
And so going along with what Dr. Mackey's saying, I've called you to compliment you on your communication skills.
Thank you, sir.
You're all so great in that area, but you've got the financial expertise, but the communication part doesn't always come along with it, but in your case, it does. I think the way you're talking about this in the media and all of that, it's very well done.
Thank you, sir.
What I would like to ask you, so the rate hike does not include recouping bad debt from the unpaid customer bills. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
And describe the magnitude of that problem.
So the approach we're taking, so the magnitude of past due accounts, it's approximately $130 million or so, give or take. The $20 million does a couple of things. It's an inject immediately to CPS and provides kind of near-term liquidity, and that's helping those customers who are most at need. The second element of it is, what about the rest of it? Well, as we resume our kind of normal process for customers that are not on the affordability discount plan, it allows us time to see how it plays out with those customers in terms of catching up on their bills or not. So there is a possibility that as our approach over the next 24 months, if we don't see the response from those customers who don't qualify for the funds in terms of catching up on their bills, that will be something, sir, that we will have to incorporate into our next request from a recovery standpoint. But the approach we said was, we have the opportunity to buy some time now with this $20 million, so let's not start recovering for... $20 million, so let's not start recovering for an amount we don't know fully yet in terms of how it may play itself out in the next six, nine months.
So I don't know if I agree with that, but, sir, you're saying $20 million against, and the figure again is 100?
120 or 130 million or so that are past due. There's a separate number I don't have offhand that are eligible for disconnect. That's a smaller number, and that's probably the more at-risk number that, I don't know if Rudy has it off the top of his head, but it's a smaller number.
Miss Steen, to me, that that's more of an, you know, because you talked about the approach on dropping this, the amount was to address immediate financial needs, and I think that's immediate.
Yeah.
And I think waiting two years, we've got to have a good idea. I know you very much looked at this. We've got to have a good idea of how that's going to hit us.
Mr. Steen, our approach on this, we paused, we really haven't restarted disconnects for residential customers because we wanted to get some clarity on what the city was going to be able to help us with in terms of ARPA funding, and there's other funding out there for customers who are, you know, even, you know, moderate income levels. We're knocking on doors, we're doing everything we can do to reach every single customer who has the opportunity at some available, you know, assistance to try to get caught up. All of that is revenue in the door for CPS Energy that will help towards that particular issue. In January, we will start the disconnect process for all other customers, and there are a number of customers, by our estimation, that can pay that have just chosen not to for whatever reason. And again, when we begin that process, we believe that, you know, a good portion of that 130 million, maybe as much as 40, 50% of that, we will see come in the door, and then that'll allow us to whittle away and put some new programs, you know, in place to try to get at the rest of it. So I would expect, you know, come next March, April, that we'll have a real, a much clearer picture of what that actual bad debt liability is, and then we can move forward from there on how to attack it. You know, there are also some additional funds that are going to be coming through the city that, you know, we're talking to city staff about that may also provide additional assistance down the road. So I think this is a reasonable approach. I think, you know, that $130 million will likely be something closer to 40 or 50 million come next spring, and then we can, we can continue to whittle away at that.
I wasn't, I thought we'd already started disconnects on residential.
No, sir. We paused, we started the process of reinstituting it in about October. We started having some conversations about how much money might be available through the American, the federal programs that we wanted to make sure, you know, we didn't prematurely get that process going. So, you know, and we also have the holidays. We typically don't, you know, disconnect between Thanksgiving and Christmas, and so for us, it was really a delay of about 30 days until we got into the holiday season anyway. So January, we will, we will begin in earnest.
Well, I still maintain that if what you're trying to do with this 3.85% is address immediate financial needs, that that falls in that category, and that some, there should be some consideration of that. If you're going to know in March or April, but then we've locked this into place for, you know, that's, that's the rate increase we're going to operate with for two years.
Yes, sir. I understand that that is your perspective. We, you know, Corey and I have looked real closely at this, and we feel like, you know, we can manage through, you know, the next, you know, this will help us immediately with investment we've got to make. And, you know, next year, I think we can, you know, we can get a much clearer picture on where we're at with respect to the bad debt expense.
All right. Go ahead and let others ask questions. I may have some more.
Mr. Kelly?
Dr. Mackey, you mentioned that you were confused about the previous rate negotiations. I'll be honest with you, I'm not confused, but I'm concerned. I have watched this company for many, many years. I've been on the board almost 11 years. I've tracked the company for many years. This is the first time in my experience that the city is telling us how to do our rate. We convinced everybody we needed 10%, we might could live with 8%. We get with the city, and all of a sudden, they redo our numbers, and we're at 3.85. The city's smarter than our own people. We've got a CFO. I've got a lot of respect for Eric Walsh and his team over there, but they don't know squat about the inner workings of this company, or at least they shouldn't know anywhere near what our people know. And so for us to miraculously have a meeting with city council and they convince us, yeah, 3.85 is all you need, it's a good number. That tells me that's a political number. In the past, what we have done, we have come up with a number that we absolutely had to have, that our internal people validated each and every penny. And then we took it to city council and told them, this is what we've got to have. Now we're going to city council and saying, what do you think we should have? Go do the math for us, go figure it out, put a political spin on it, and then we'll buy it. That is absolute BS. That is the stuff that will kill this company. I heard one council member say, if you're going to ask us for a rate increase, we're going to ask you for stuff. When I was in New York visiting with our rating agencies, that's exactly the stuff they said you better not do. And now we're doing it. We are politicizing the devil out of this company. We are turning this company into a city department, and this company was set up originally with five trustees, four business trustees, a mayor as an unofficial member, ex-official member, so that they could run this company as a business. We are very rapidly becoming a quote "community asset," whatever the hell that is. We better get back to running this company as a business. 3.85 might be great. I know it's a great political number, but it may not be the right number. I would have liked to have seen you give us the number, and I heard you say in previous sessions, we needed 8% to 10%. But all of a sudden, a miraculous meeting with the city gets us to 3.85. I don't buy it. It's political BS. I know it, you know it, and at the end of the day, we ought to admit it. And you know what's going to happen? The rating agencies are going to figure out we're nothing more now than a city department, and you're going to see one downgrading after another. And I promise you, when that happens to us, it will also happen to the city of San Antonio. We better get our act together. We better start running a business here, or else we're headed towards absolute mediocrity.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly. Mayor, please.
Well, first, we didn't miraculously become a community asset. We've been a community asset since the day this company was owned by the city of San Antonio. Second is, I'd like for Rudy and Corey to respond to that, because this wasn't the city having a miraculous meeting where all of a sudden the number was changed. Perhaps you can talk about the process that was followed to find out where the rate request would be, which is the first time we're seeing this now.
I'll start, and then I'll turn it over to Corey. You know, the team worked for about three weeks daily to really take a look at the model that we utilized to bring these conversations forward. Mr. Kelly, there's a lot of unknowns. You know, we plan out 10 years, and we'll continue to plan out, you know, years ahead to ensure that we've got the assets that we need, the strategic plans in place to serve our community. But quite frankly, there are some decisions this council, I mean, this board needs to make regarding the future of our generation assets, regarding what our rate structure looks like, that were, some of which were actually built into the model that we pulled out. And the only reason we pulled out and kind of started back from the ground up was because we came to an agreement under the most reasonable of expectations. Going eight years without a rate conversation at the city, that's bad business. You know, our costs change year in, year out, just like everybody else's does. Our assumptions about the future of our business change, our supply chain challenges that we're having right now, you know, and the fact, the challenge that's having on the business and the cost drivers, you know, we're in a different time today than we were eight years ago. It's unreasonable to expect us to go eight years every time without a rate increase. We've only actually had five rate increases in the last 30 years. We went back, that's the question council asked us. Going back to '91, I think we've had five rate increases. That's an average of once every five years. It's still too, you know, too infrequent. So what we agreed to was, let's stabilize what the need is now. We know you're going to have to come in multiple times over the next few years to reconcile where you thought where you were going to be versus where you are, and we'll take another bite at the apple. So our approach was try to pare it back to the things we knew we actually needed right now to stabilize this and start planning for those conversations, you know, that will happen frequently in the years ahead. And that's how we got to the number we got. It wasn't, you know, any kind of directive by the city that says, this is, this is your number. Corey, and that does injustice to the work that Corey and the team have done to thoughtfully arrive at what we believe gets us what we need. And so, you know, that would be my response. You know, I've, we have, you know, I have been in many of those conversations, and I can tell you, it's been collaborative, and we've worked on this together. You know, we're, again, the city is our regulator. It's important that we find a way to gain alignment on what the model tells us, and that's what we've tried to do here. Corey, you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, thank you, Rudy. So absolutely, I think the important thing to remember is, like Rudy said, it's about communication, it's about partnership, and we, it's been eight years. We were out of practice of that partnership and what that communication looks like. I have gotten to know the city and Ben and Eric very well, and rightly so. I should have probably known them better beforehand, had these conversations. And absolutely respectfully, Trustee Kelly, the characterization that we were just told, here's a number, is not correct. We partnered, we went through the key elements in there, we debated, what are things that can wait a couple of years? What are certain things that require, you know, policy conversations from the rate advisory committee and things of that nature, and identifying those very clearly. So I'd say this ask identifies what those key risks are, right? There are conversations for future generation planning that are unknown, that we will have to come back and discuss serious costs with, and that's on the bullet point on my presentation, Rudy's, Ben's, whoever's, key risk. There will be a reckoning on the pandemic past due accounts, but we agree that we didn't want to start recovery yet because we were getting the inject of dollars, and we still want to let our disconnection process play out. These were discussions and debates we had with the city staff. And so we also discussed estimates on future technology, and furthermore, there were also estimates we had from the summertime that just, we got better numbers because time had passed and we had worked with vendors, and we saw some savings just from that. All said, very clearly stated that we understood we need to maintain our financial metrics, and from a liquidity perspective, over the next two years, we're targeting about 170 days cash on hand above our 150, and we're targeting a coverage ratio above 1.5. We're looking at 1.6 to 1.7. The area of risk is going to be on the debt to capitalization metric, but we believe that it peaks next year, all things constant, in the low 62%. With the plan to come back multiple times every two years to drive that number down to the six D's around year five or six, that is a strategy that the rating agencies need to hear and we need to be a part of. To the extent those investments change between now and then, and they will, we'll have to come back to council and, you know, on a much more frequent basis, updating you, hey, what's happened with the pandemic bad debt? Hey, where's the board at at generation planning? What do the costs look like? What are these estimates coming in for our enterprise resource planning system? Because we still have RFPs we have to get back. What do all those look like? And we will be very transparent that there is more to come on those particular risk issues. But that's the type of conversations that we had with the city from a partnership perspective rather than a being dictated to perspective. And I would say the last thing from the rating agencies, you know, we went off together. I had a wonderful trip with you years ago and got to, got to know you and enjoyed that trip up to the rating agencies. And the conversations I've had with them all summer long up through a couple of weeks ago, they are really looking forward to that support and alignment and partnership. They're not looking for that conflict. And so I think having the thoughtful debates that we've had with the city and us allows us to get to that space, and you'll see in our presentation in January when we talk to the board where we're landing from a financial metrics perspective, which again, is, I believe is a comfortable snapshot in time, and we will very clearly state that these are the other risk items that may cause us, to your point, Trustee Steen, maybe we've got to come back sooner if things don't play out the way we think they are. We're not going to make the presumption now on our customers to collect for some of those items. We're going to let them play out a little bit longer. So hopefully that is helpful and gives a little bit of context of both Trustee Kelly and Mayor Nuremberg.
Ms. Gonzalez. You good? Okay. Mr. Steen.
So I'm glad you brought up the key financial metrics, because I know the credit rating agencies are very much focused on that, and that should be part of any presentation that you give to the board. We can't take our eye off that.
Absolutely.
And so you're saying that of the three we have, the one that you're most concerned is about debt capitalization?
Yes, sir. Yes. And so that still remains slightly above our 60% threshold. I foresee it peaking in that year at 62.36 or so. I don't have the exact decimal, but then trending back down, and we have to make it trend back down. So as part of the next rate request we go for, that'll be a key conversation point is, what is that plan, now that you've had some time play out, to make sure you get that metric down to 60, in the 60% range by year five or six? That'll be, that'll be key. And those are conversations we've had with the city. They're aware of that, and in the projections that we've given to the rating agencies just last week, those numbers were in there, and so they are focused on seeing where we're projecting those numbers to be at.
And Mr. Steen, that has absolutely been a top, a focus of conversation, not only in our presentation to council, but also by Ben's. You know, obviously, as our regulator, they keep a close eye on our financial metrics as well, and, and again, when, when we talk about this being what we need to financially shore ourselves up, as long as I've been here, I don't know that there has been a year in the last decade we've been at, at or below 60 in our debt to capitalization, you know, ratio.
We did get below it a couple of years ago, and then it've come back up.
Right. But we're always hovering, you know, in a range, and, and again, that is one metric that we'll have to keep working on.
I want to thank you all and the board for coming on that and that. What did I ask you all? We walked out of that first B session, not B session, we walked out, we visited with the city manager and controller, and we walked outside, and we talked about, what was the first thing I told both, asked both of y'all to do?
We're not there yet. You've got to keep working on this.
That's right, and don't undercut us. Make sure that we get what we need in order to move forward.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I've got an additional question. So what we're seeing, of course, in the economy is inflation, and what's going to happen, the Fed's going to tighten on monetary policy, and it's going to, I believe, drive interest rates up. So in all of your planning, how have you dealt with interest rate risk? Describe that for me.
You know, we have a conservative approach on interest rates. Every year, we forecast what our borrowing rates are going to be, and every year, we come in under that because our debt is very attractive and we come in kind of the prevailing, you know, estimates. I'd say that we took the same approach going forward, taking into account the, you know, financial, you know, position you kind of see the economy in now. I would say that that doesn't mean we're exempt from, from risk on interest rate, but going forward in terms of next year, you know, we'll have a transaction in January, February timeframe that'll be a refunding, and then what's still to be done is the long-term financing for the costs that we've already paid for Winter Storm Yuri, that 418 million. We'll have to take that long as well. So what I would say is, from a forecasting perspective, we take into account the real-time economic factors into that estimate, and every year that we've done that, we've wanted to take a conservative approach, and, you know, we've, we've always come in under. So if history is kind of an example of how we're planning, I think we have an okay approach. I'll put that as a risk factor, though, and my takeaway from this meeting is that as we come back in January, I'm going to very clearly list out what those key risk items are that are out there pending, that could bring us back to the board and to the city council sooner than later, but that's been part of our approach all along, is to be very transparent about what those key risks could be.
Yeah, so that fits in with a general question I have, and that was that, given the financial stresses on the company, when our rate request has dropped from over 10% to 3.85%, it's got to cause you concern. And, and so I know you're trying to defend the 3.85, but can you tell us what your major concerns are?
Absolutely. I would tell you my major concern is the next rate case afterwards. It'll be critical that we get on a multi-year plan or some frequency between the 18, 24 months, wherever it is. So I think that is a key risk that both the board and the community and city council need to be aware of, is we're not one and done here. We've got a list of a lot of items that we need to discuss. There are other economic factors that are out there, so we need to be transparent. So I think my biggest heartburn is, we get past this one, is the community, is the board, is city council, are they ready for the next conversation? We've got a pretty We've got a pretty much turnaround and have pretty quickly here.
Just a brief comment, and again, thank you for your patience up there. I do support a structure, though, that encourages some flexibility. I think one of my concerns, and it seems just like yesterday, became a trustee, it became very apparent to me during my first year that we were out of touch in many areas of where the city was moving, the expectations from the county, the city, a good amount of external stakeholders. And so it became very obvious to me, also maybe because I'm in the industry, that we were facing many disruption, whether it's competition, new technologies, political environment pressures, right? And so I do think, whether we like it or not, winter year, if anything, highlighted some areas that needed critical attention. And so we've seen some drastic staff turnover rates. We've seen a lot of ugliness that came out of that. But I'm a big believer that through challenging times, it provides us the opportunity to revisit. And I think that one key area that we must revisit is that what is that business plan with the city, with elected officials? What do we want CPS to look like? So that it can support, not just what we're asking today, but what it can support for the future as one of the fastest-growing cities, but also challenged by one of the highest poverty levels, right? And so we have several organizations that are part of our team. We have RAC, we have CAC, we have other organizations that are working in our behalf to provide information to us as trustees. And so I think at the end of the day, you know, having a little bit of flexibility and having those tough conversations, Corey, I've had the opportunity to also attend the B sessions and also talk to a array of different individuals. Think it's important that somehow, again, that whatever we choose to do, it benefits all customers, and they receive the same level of quality, reliability, resiliency, and renewable share, because those are other concerns that I have. As we push other technologies, it also hurts the most vulnerable population, and then those who can afford more, expect more modern, you know, accessibility to our products and services. And so we are faced with challenges, but I also believe we're change, we are also facing good, strong possibilities in the way this was handled. And hopefully, in the future, in the immediate future, those that we work with will be open to doing things slightly different. But thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Corey.
Thank you, Chair Dr. Maggie. Thank you, trustees. I appreciate it.
Mr. Barnum, we're kind of moving a little bit behind. You going to help us out on a little time?
Yes, sir. I will move through this very quickly, because I realize we are behind schedule. So let me just, let me just jump straight to some of the core information. So on our winter preparedness, and this slide is really focused on the recommendations that we got from the Committee on Emergency Preparedness for the city. As you can see on this slide, most of these items are effectively complete. In fact, of the 37 individual items that we've been tracking, 14 of those have been submitted back to the Municipal Utilities Committee as complete. 22 of those are kind of in our final documentation and review process, with only one that may run a little bit behind those. So we expect most of these items to be submitted back to the Municipal Utilities Committee this week. And one of them may be in the next week. So very good progress. And as we've been reporting, we'll be wrapping up all these things by the end of this year. In particular, I wanted to mention, we talked a lot about the work in the power plants and the work on the grid and around load shed. Probably one of the big efforts we're closing out now is around the communications plan, which we will be issuing a revised communications plan this month. And a lot of those activities are already in place. Our communications team, under Melissa Sorolla, have been very engaged with their partners at SARS and the city. I think they are putting together a joint emergency preparedness program that they're going to be rolling out in January, as well as doing some training this week with the Joint Information Center on how they will jointly manage these emergency communications and operations if that need arises. One other thing I'll mention, just around communications systems, as you all know, for the public input session that we're having this evening, we sent out mass communications. Part of doing that was, again, to continue testing those systems and kind of the limits of those. But one, I was talking to Deanna Hardwick just before this, and in our texting system, we were able to send out somewhere north of 700 text messages, 700,000 text messages that went out in about an hour. So this is really a great capability that that team has continued to get a handle on that will help us in communicating to our community and our customers in an emergency event. I won't go through this. This is kind of a summary of a lot of the winter preparations that we have been making and that are in place.
You could go back on that one there.
Yes, I can. Yes, sir.
First plant operation and support, I like that, where you said third-party validations of improvements and increased natural gas storage abilities, the two major things that I see in the plant operations and support.
Yes, sir. A lot of things are in place. And in fact, one of the things I was going to mention on this last slide around plant preparation is ERCOT, they, on this last slide, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the external activities. Because CPS can do all the right things, but we are part of a larger grid. And so everybody has to be kind of pulling their weight. And we've been looking more broadly. ERCOT has their roadmap that they have been pursuing, some 60 action items that they've been moving forward on. One of those was around plant, power plant and transmission system affidavits and inspections. So Rudy had to sign off on paperwork here, I mean, a couple of weeks ago, basically saying that all of our power plants and our transmission systems were fully prepared in accordance with the requirements that the PUC and ERCOT had issued. And so we issued that paperwork by the deadline. It's interesting that some news that's come out recently is the PUC is issuing about $7.5 million in fines to about 13 power plants that did not get their paperwork submitted. I bring this up really just pointing out that ERCOT, the PC, are taking this very seriously. I think really putting some stick behind this to make sure that everyone knows that this is serious business, I think is a good sign. And so that's going on. Also, along those lines, we had some of our plant inspections last week. ERCOT sent out some inspectors, looked at our, many of our power plants, make sure that we were prepared in our exit interview with ERCOT. Good feedback. I think they were happy with what they saw. And we have our transmission inspection coming up this week, actually tomorrow, I believe. And we are fully prepared for that. So a lot of activity at ERCOT level, making sure that they're ready to go from there in. May have mentioned, FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, issued their final report. The map you see is from that report, and it just points out that this event was not just ERCOT, was not just San Antonio. This included the South Central United States. And so that report talks about and gives a number, 28 formal recommendations, about 300 pages in that report, very detailed information, a lot of good information, if you're so interested. One of their, I think, emphasis was around the need for better interactions, better integration between natural gas infrastructure and power generation infrastructure. There's a lot of interdependencies there, and a lot of work that needs to be done in getting, getting those working together to ensure resiliency of that combined system. Last item I'll mention is around the Texas Public Utilities Commission has published its market redesign blueprint. That was actually out for comment that closed on Friday of last week. And so the expectation is that the PUC will be issuing their final roadmap on the market redesign process. Focuses a lot on getting the right incentives in place for, to make sure that we have the right amount of dispatchable generation, as well as dispatchable load, and that the pricing is aligned with what it should be. So that will kick off a lot of market redesign activity that we will be engaged in, and our government relations team will be following throughout the next year. And that was really the items or next steps, kind of what we've been doing. We'll continue to report out to this board, as well as to any other entities who are interested. As Rudy said, we were over at the Commissioner's Court this past week. We report out to the Municipal Utilities Committee on a monthly basis, as well as anyone else who has a request for the information. And we are quickly wrapping up all of these action items that we had for this year, so that we're fully prepared as we come into this winter period. And that's all I have. Be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Steen.
So, Mr. Barnum, would you go back to, I don't know where, it's page seven or maybe slide four? I guess it's your...
This one?
Yes, sir.
No. The one that says combined action list? I think he skipped over it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So in the first place, thanks for this, because we've asked for something like this, where we could really get a quick overview of what's occurring. And this does a good job of that. You say boldly at the bottom, progress continues to execute plans for completion of items by the end of the year. Is that our fiscal year or calendar year?
Calendar.
Right, so that's a little bit over two weeks away?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so somebody, well, let me ask you, what's the difference between an item that's in progress and one that's pending?
I believe that pending is finalizing the action plan. In progress is basically executing the action plan. So some of the items, there's probably a lot of progress that's been made on it, but maybe they haven't completely documented the final action plan around that. And so that's what that's reflecting.
Okay, but looking at this, if a member of the public was looking at this and looking to feel like, are we really getting there? So I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I added up there 142 action items?
On this, yes, this is, this list is well over 100 different action items. And it's, well, as you can see on the pie chart on the right...
I added up the pie chart.
Wide variety of things.
It's 142?
Yeah.
Okay. And so if you look at the, if you look at the number that are complete, it's 55. And so it's a little, little bit over two weeks from the end of the year. And so shouldn't someone be concerned that they're looking at this, that right now, we've accomplished less than half? I mean, right around 40%? How are we going to get that other 60% by the end of the year in the next two?
Mr. Sein, I'll say, I'm getting multiple, you know, documented action plans every day to sign off on as complete. So the pace has certainly picked up, you know, since I've been in this role, the last couple of weeks, we've made substantial progress. So it's a matter of dotting Is, crossing Ts, and turning in the actual action plans to the Municipal Utility Committee, that is now, you know, the kind of committee of jurisdiction that we have to submit these to. So we're moving along. I mean, every day, I'm dealing with forms to sign off on that we can knock off the list. So we'll get there.
I think we've got fewer action items for the CEP, and we're further along in accomplishing those.
Yes, this is the longer list that was kind of internal...
We've done...
Yes, internal lessons learned.
But really, you're going to get, I mean, great if you're going to do it, but you're going to get all 142 done by the end of the year?
Yes, that is, that is our intention. And also, one thing we will be working on is giving the Board of Trustees a full report on these items, as well as the items that went to the, you know, that we got from the Committee on Emergency Preparedness. I mean, that'll probably be in January, before we would kind of pull all those documents together. Thank you.
Yeah, well, the same question I guess I had last month, Paul. I get the impression that you and your team are doing a great job here. But you and I both know that a chain is only as strong as its weakest link. And do we have weak links in the ERCOT system? You talked about that a moment ago. But do you think ERCOT is really riding herd on the other folks to make sure they're doing as good of a job as we are? I still maintain that if we had not have had to shed so much load during Yuri, our citizens would have suffered a whole lot less. And so it tells us again, we're a unified system, and we're all dependent upon each other. So do you feel comfortable that our colleagues around the state are doing their share to make sure that we're not going to have to share so much load with them, that if we have a similar issue like Yuri, we're going to be hurt again?
Yes. I am, I am confident that ERCOT has been, and the PUC behind them, have been really pushing forward. And I think, as I mentioned, these fines that they've readily issued in this case, with the threat of fines of, I think, what's pegged at $1 million a day for violation. I think they've sent a clear message that the generators and the system operators out there really have to get prepared for this winter. Now, you know, what is that weakest link? I hope we don't end up in another Yuri event to have to find out. What I can tell you is that from counterparts that I talk with, you know, at other utilities, they're engaged in a lot of the same activities we are, and looking for ways to make these same improvements that we've been pursuing. No one wants to end up back where we were if we are faced with another Yuri-type event.
And trustee Kelly, I will add that the, and Paul mentioned it, the inspections that ERCOT's doing of all the generation, you know, facilities across the state, makes me feel a lot better that they will identify the things, you know, that haven't been done that need to be done, because, you know, we're having to go through all of the same inspections that the rest of the industry is doing. So from ERCOT's standpoint, I think they're doing what they can to be as ready as we can be. I think, you know, again, from my standpoint, you know, getting the gas supply we need, you know, during the coldest times of the year, you know, we really don't have any insight into that. So I think that still is an unknown. But, you know, there are a lot of articles have been written, says gas companies are doing what they need to do as well. But again, until we put stress on the system, it's hard to tell where that weakest link is.
Yes, Mr. Steen.
Before you sit down, Mr. Barnum, how long have you been with CPS Energy?
A little over 35 years.
So you're one of the people that, when I came in the door, so to speak, impressed me immediately. And you're a very, very important part of CPS Energy. And I want you to know how much this board values you. And we'd like to keep you around a long time, if we could.
I appreciate that. I, this has been an absolutely fantastic place to work.
Mr. Barnum, I'd like to proceed with another question, and I'd like to deliver a little more information on this load shed, you know, and balancing out power throughout the city of San Antonio, you know, how we, how certain pockets had power and then other pockets didn't. You were saying that we added more circuits, someone, not you, but someone was saying that we added more... that we added more circuits. So, it was something like we'd be able to cut the power off 15 minutes every hour. How many voltage or watts we need in order to do something like that? That in case ERCOT, because they're going to take a portion of it, but how much do we need in order to balance that throughout the city of San Antonio?
So, we, we increased the number of circuits that we have available for firm load shed, what you were talking about.
Yes.
By about 33%. So, significant increase. The, you know, direction I'd given to our operations staff is they need to figure out a way that with existing systems, because that's what you have to play with, we need to be able to manage a Yuri-sized event plus some. And that's exactly what they accomplished by a lot of effort in really narrowing down the circuits that are kind of, you know, set aside for those, you know, critical loads like hospitals and that kind of thing. And a lot of reprogramming in our systems that manage that. But as you stated, yes, the system now is designed for a 15-minute outage followed by some period of on-time, right? Depending on how much load shed is being asked for, that might be, that might be multiple hours that you're on. It might be, it might be 15 minutes and, you know, if things got, you know, Yuri-sized or bigger.
Okay, and what watch that they take away from us last year and what did they leave us with? There has to be some kind of percentage that we're able to cope with when that happens again.
In terms of a percentage of circuits?
Yes.
I think we, last year, on a rough numbers, I'd have to, you know...
Yes, yes, just rough.
I think we had about a third of our circuits that were available for load shed...
Okay.
...last year. And we've increased that by, like I say, about 33%. Added 100 and 150 some odd circuits to our list of circuits for firm load shed.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Come in, Mr. Garza, you have?
Well, one thing that I would just add, what that means in real terms is that there are customers who did not see an outage last event that will see an outage next event. And I want to be, be real clear about that. But everybody's experience will improve because they're going to get their 15 minutes off and some amount of time on, which is what we couldn't, you know, accomplish last go-around because of the sheer amount of load they were asking us to shed. So, you know, overall, more customers will be impacted, which for the customer who didn't get impacted last time, it will be a new negative experience for that customer. But as a community, we will all share, you know, much more equally this go-around than what happened last time. And we feel good that that's fair and that's equitable and that's the direction we should be going in. So, I just wanted to make that, that point because I don't know that it's been clearly stated, you know, that there are customers who did not see an outage last time that will see an outage this time, but, but it will be managed much more efficiently. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Well, can I just add something? I mean, Paul is doing a great job. The team is doing a great job to respond to the CEP and the recommendations therein. And I know there's, there's work yet to be done. But let's be clear, the ERCOT, ERCOT has guaranteed the lights won't go out. But in the meantime, as Trustee Kelly stated, there are utilities all across the state that are scrambling to try to keep up their end of the bargain. And with little accountability at the state level, we can only do what we can do here, which is why the accountability for us remains at this table and with our operations. And we are going to do what we can. But, but also, we require ERCOT to put its money where its mouth is with regard to regulation if we're going to keep up with their guarantee.
Yes, sir. And I think, I think the market redesign will really be where the proof is in the pudding because that ultimately is what drives generators to do the things that we need to see done.
Eric, you said a key point that I just want to reiterate. The work left to be done isn't a 12-month process. You know, there's, generation needs to be built. There's market redesign changes that'll take, you know, a couple, two, three years to implement effectively. So, so you said a key point. This is step one to, you know, belts and suspenders ourselves for this winter, but there's a lot of work to be done in the years ahead.
Mr. Steen.
I just noticed that Frank Almarez, did you want to add something? Or were you just standing by in case a question came up?
He's my phone friend. We're the dynamic duo. So, we've been taking turns on these presentations and various forums, so, yes.
You're letting Mr. Barnum make all these representations.
If he's making it, I'm making it along.
All right, that's good to hear.
And vice versa.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Barnum.
Thank you.
Great presentation. And as always, you know, we're just keeping us informed on this each board member, each board meeting. Thank you for this. All right, we, we have number eight is a convening to executive session. And what I'd like to see us do, the things that we have on executive session, we could really put off to next board meeting.
Yes, sir.
Because we have the public input and I've, there's Miss Ramirez about that, we can put it off to next board meeting because we don't have any additional information. And what we, the information we have, it can be put at next board meeting. And what I'd like to do, if the board permits, is to move on with the agenda, the regular agenda unless any board member has a concern about that. Okay, thank you. Well, then we'll move on to number nine, approval of consent items. Nine A will be minutes of the regular board meeting held on 10/25/21. Payment to the city of San Antonio for November 2021. Flexible rate revolving note renewal. Corey Kaczynski, that right there. And D, procurement. I'd like to find out, it's a couple of items before we move on that. If Corey could explain, C, and Frank could explain D1 before we move on that right there.
All right, they should be...
I don't, I don't...
They should be coming right back, sir.
Okay, okay. If they could explain that before we, because it's a consent agenda, I'd like to, them explain that right there. Mr. Kaczynski, can you explain that flexible rate revolving note renewal?
Absolutely. I walked a long distance, sorry.
Okay, good. You're in shape.
Yeah, I am. Yes, the flexible revolver note, this is a short-term liquidity instrument that we have. It requires annual renewal. And we've had this program in place since 2008. It's a 20-year program that council approved. However, the liquidity component requires annual renewal. Currently, we have $100 million of the 418 million that we've paid for winter storm Yuri costs on it. Pardon me. And so, this expires at the end of February. So, what we're asking the board to do is to renew the liquidity approval so that we can carry it for another 12 months until the time when we actually take that component of the debt long. But we'll have to finish our conversations with the regulatory asset through the board and city council. So, we'll do that sometime in the spring. So, this is critical in ensuring that we can keep this particular short-term liquidity instrument in place for us until we fully resolve those remaining costs from winter storm Yuri.
Any board members, any questions on that?
Yeah, I did have a question. I assumed we were going to get to the presentation.
I'm sorry to interrupt, sir, but can you turn your microphone on?
Turn your mic.
Yeah, just on the renewal of the notes and the financing, Corey, I did have a question over on my page 40 in my briefing materials. There is a, one column says existing terms and the other column says indicative terms. And one of the columns was before the rate downgrade. The other column was after the rate downgrade. The question I have is it looks like our undrawn fee is going up from 30 basis points to 45 basis points. But then it looks like our pricing on the drawn fee for taxable and tax exempt actually went down 10 basis points. But if I'm reading the notes right, with the new SOFR as opposed to LIBOR, that's going to make about a 10 basis points differential. So, it looks like the rate then is roughly the same with the new pricing mechanism. But what happened is your undrawn fee went up from 30 to 45 basis points. Is that pretty much the gist of what happened with this new facility?
Yeah, that's correct in terms of the pricing. And since it is drawn, we're actually going to see, you know, 10 basis points, you know, benefit to us.
Do you think the new LIBOR replacement's going to add about 10 basis points?
Benefit to us, yeah.
Okay.
And the other terms too, the undrawn fee, that's still in line with market pricing generally, you know, as of now. So, I'm comfortable with all those.
Good. The other question I had was on slide 39, the fact that we're all talking about some pretty heavy inflation that's been hitting us recently, which probably is going to lead to increased interest rates. Am I reading this right that over 80% of our current capitalization is fixed? And if so, I think that's a good thing. The question would be the maturities. Are we facing a lot of maturities near term? Or do you think we have it fixed for a fairly good cycle?
I think we have it fixed for a pretty good cycle. That is a strategic kind of 80-20 split that we have. Yeah, we have it fixed for quite some time, out into the 2040s.
So, you feel pretty good about the way we're...
Yeah, I feel pretty good about the existing fix.
The possibility of inflation, interest rates coming at us.
Yeah, the existing debt that's fixed, I think we're comfortable with. The risk is actually, as Trustee Steen mentioned earlier, in the new issuance of debt that will be coming forward in the coming years. So, you know, 300, 400 million dollars a year to support our capital program. I think the risk in interest rates is going to be in those borrowings in the next 12, 24 months.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions, board? Okay, okay. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Ms. Kaczynski. Mr. Almarez, if you could come up and explain that procurement general services on that one right there, item?
D1?
Yes, sir, thank you. So, this is a services agreement to, it's three years. It's to provide turbine overhaul support for our combustion turbine aerod derivative units. It's with two companies. One is TransCanada and the other is GE. GE's facility is in Houston. TransCanada's is near Calgary in Canada. And what we do is we award work to the two of them and then work with them as time moves on to direct a given scope of work to each of the two based on what needs to be done.
Well, I want to thank you for that because in the last, I think, two to two and a half months, we've, y'all have contacted us about turbines problems and rotor problems and all of these things that we have been able to work on and find problems and find additional problems. How did we pay for those? Was that something we budgeted for in our capital outlay or was that something we had to borrow money for?
Yes, sir. So, some of these are, especially the planned overhauls, they will happen on a schedule based on the number of hours that the unit operates or sometimes based on the number of starts. This one is hours-based and we have a pretty good schedule for it. There'll be a defined scope of work that we know that we have to do. It's, you know, thousands of specific things to go look at. But then, if we find additional scope, then we'll do that additional work.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other board members, any questions? Yes, Mr. Steen.
Before you sit down, Mr. Almarez, how long have you been with CPS Energy?
10 years, sir.
10 years.
Yes, sir.
Just before you sit down, I want to tell you what an outstanding job you do and how much we value you.
Thank you, sir.
And I hope you'll continue to enjoy your position here. And, anyway, I just want to, we can't thank you enough for everything you do.
Thank you for the kind words, sir. Appreciate it.
Mr. Alvarez, as far as the weather preparedness, I know Mr. Barnum was up speaking right there. What do you see the positive things and what do you see some things that we need to, that maybe this board could help you, help you all with on that right there?
Well, sir, I think that the board has done a fantastic job of really pushing us to think broadly. We, in fact, you particularly, sir, I know that we had discussions early on right after winter storm Yuri and talked about what the scope of what we were looking at. And you really pushed us to expand our thinking about outage scheduling and what dual fuel opportunities might look like and a number of different things. So, we've taken actions on those. I would say at this point, we've had 10 units inspected by ERCOT. The Texas reliability entity is going to come have a friendly inspection, you know, to train their staff and come see us. And we know that ERCOT has been doing many things across the state as well, like other inspections. We've completed our weatherization plan. The rest of our planned maintenance outages will conclude this week, which leaves one unit in a forced outage status, which as you pointed out, we found because we were doing our planned maintenance. So, before we get to the dead of winter, when it's really cold, you know, later in January, we were able to find it and we'll have that unit back in service by the end of the first week or so in January. So, I mean, I feel, I feel very confident that we have taken the steps necessary to weatherize those units and to position ourselves, not just from a physical standpoint, but also from a supply of power to backstop our units and also a supply of natural gas.
Again, I'd like to let y'all know, if you could let your team know that this board really appreciates the hard work in preparing for this winter. And through your leadership and Paul's leadership, Mr. Garza's leadership and the workers out there that's working hard to make sure that we keep the lights electric on in this company, you know, we appreciate y'all and for all the hard work that y'all doing. I know because this, unless you've done this before, been a part of it, you know, it's not an easy task when you take the criticism, but people don't understand behind the scenes the work that you all are doing to make sure that we keep these lights on. So, as, on behalf of this entire board, thank you and all the workers for the wonderful job that y'all are doing.
Thank you, sir. And I'll convey your thanks, but they'll hear you too. I'll make sure that they watch the segment of the presentation and I know they will appreciate those kind words, sir. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We will proceed on with this. We, it's a voting item and we have to have a motion on this consent agenda, approval of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion? We move by Mr. Kelly. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gonzalez. Do we have any other questions or comments? If not, would you take...
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, motion carries. Five zero. Okay, we move to regular agenda. Item number 10 is committee reports. Operation Oversight Committee meeting held on 11/8/2021. The OOC Align Risk Subcommittee meeting held on 11/8/2021. We have a C Master Planning and Oversight Committee meeting held on 11/15/2021. We have the CEO Search Committee meeting held on 11/11/2021. Then we have the CEO Search Committee meeting held on 11/29/2021. At this time, I know it's a discussion item. Do we have any discussions on this? If we don't have any discussions, we have a recommendation, any recommendations to put this in the minutes for the regular board meeting? I make, I recommend that we put the Oversight Committee and the OOC Align Risk Subcommittee in the minutes. Mr. Kelly and Ms. Gonzalez, what you prefer to do?
Yeah, that's right.
You're good? Okay, they're good to put that in the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Regular meeting on 10. Before we adjourn, I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year's, happy holidays because we have Christmas and New Years. And make sure that everybody have a safe, safe, happy holidays. Have any question, anything before anybody make a recommendation to adjourn?
I do have one point just briefly before we go. This particular board meeting, we did not have the financials included. And I'd like to recommend that we continue to make the financials a major part of each one of our meetings. So, it's just something I'd like to make sure we get that in.
Make sure that's in there.
Yes, sir, Ms. Kelly. We should be sending you financial reports every month, but I will make sure, you know, certainly we're focused on ending the year strong and trying to get back to a, you know, a positive net income. So, I'll make sure that you have what you need there.
And it goes along with what I was saying earlier, Mr. Garza, that I think we need, we don't want to take our eye off those key financial metrics. So, this board ought to be seeing those every month at its meetings.
Yes, sir. We've got a balanced scorecard that we're continuing to be focused on. So, we'll, you should be getting all that information on a regular basis.
I was just going to ask on the timing of financials, was your question, Trustee Kelly?
They're not included because of the timing of this board meeting.
It's early. So, we're finishing up closing the books and preparing those reports. So, similar to last month, we'll mail out those, that written report that I typically do every month, we'll mail that out at least next week, I think. So, you'll be receiving... So you'll be receiving those, sir. It's just both November and December board meetings were held early and so it's just a function of timing.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. We have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
We have a motion, move to adjourn the meeting. Do we have a second? Second by the mayor, all in favor say aye. Any oppose? Then motion carries, meeting's adjourned. Hey, thank you all, have a happy...